All right, we're gonna go ahead and call this special meeting to order on May 21st, 4 o'clock. Roll call.
Kirby, why not?
Tom Marsler.
Ben Keel.
Michelle Otto.
Lloyd Johnson.
Ma'am, come in.
Deb Felton.
All right, all business, discussion regarding the approving the mayoral appointments for 2019. We can't, because it's a special meeting. So, once it's, yeah, once a special meeting is closed, if we can add to it.
Remind me and wait after the meeting that you and I can talk, because there's a lot of kids playing out at regional park, and they were wondering if they couldn't have a porta potty out there.
Okay.
There, before we get anything else, there's just a couple of changes on here that I'd like to make, point out. Is the EDA now, is it done being the whole city council?
No.
Not yet, until we get the businesses? Okay.
So somewhere down the line, you're probably gonna have to look at this resolution again.
Yeah. For the US Highway 12 development, it lets Graham as the chair, but Sylvia is actually the chair, Graham's the vice.
Yep. Thank you for pointing that out.
And then, I don't know if you want to make the changes to the planning and zoning on the chair and the vice, since it wasn't.
Yep.
Okay.
Good call, Kirby, thank you.
The only other thing we had on there was that we changed the management coordinating meeting to put back to the personnel committee.
We may be later on in the meeting changing the name of the US Highway 12, or the, I'm sorry, the development committee, we might be changing that.
Right. Wouldn't we want to have discussion with them, that group though?
They, they ordered me their.
Their choice.
Yes.
Right.
So.
Okay. All right, any other further discussion on this?
Can we talk about members of the committees now?
Yep.
Okay. As I brought up in the last council meeting, I have a serious issue with when you are a member of a committee, you have certain obligations and things that you need to get done, i.e. personnel committee. We have, we sit down to do reviews, and the reviews are not complete. They suggest, Lloyd suggested that you take your, his home and complete his after the fact, after we have the review. I don't look at that as.
What did I say?
You, you offered to take the review home and complete it and bring it back while we were sitting.
I don't think I said that, because the only time I said that was for that EDA one.
I'm telling you.
And then I'm right there at the meeting, and I'm talking, so you should be able to understand that, everybody else did.
Well, we didn't have it done when the meeting started. You got it, I got mine like a week and a half in advance, so.
Yeah, but yours is pretty repetitive. Everything is, oh, wonderful, wonderful.
Can I speak first? I think I have the floor at the moment.
Okay, go ahead.
It doesn't matter what was on my reviews. The fact is, I went and completed the review in advance of sitting down. We owe it to these people to be prepared when we sit down and do their reviews, not come in half-heartedly and approach it from a distant situation, okay? So that's personnel review, that's personnel committee.
Can I have a question on that? Just, okay. If Lloyd had mentioned that he was gonna return that, did anybody just reach out and say, Lloyd, did you forget? Can you return, you know, do you have that?
No, we, we said, you don't, you can't do that. You can't sit and listen to what everybody else says, and then go home and write your review out. That's not how reviews are done.
Well, I, oh, I get that, but, I mean, you just said that he offered to take it home and fit, you know, and then return it later, right? So then my question is, did, I mean, here or there, it's whatever, did anybody then say, hey, just a reminder? Can you turn that in?
I don't think it's my job to police members on a committee.
I'm just asking the question, I'm just asking the question.
Isn't that what you're doing right now?
We have, I'm recommending that you not.
Are you the council cop, or what?
I'm recommending that you.
Hold on, guys.
I'm recommending that you not be on the personnel committee, because you failed to perform your duties as a committee member. Okay?
No.
And the first one we had, you used that opportunity to just badmouth me for 45 minutes. That's totally unacceptable.
Well, your behavior prior to that was unacceptable too.
In your opinion.
I think in most of the city.
In your, oh, most of the city. I'm glad you went around, took a survey.
No, I never did. And I didn't tell anybody about it, because somebody asked.
Let's move on.
That's what I'm stating, as far as personnel committee. As far as planning and zoning, we've been using the planning and zoning meeting. My understanding, when you're a liaison to a committee, you're supposed to sit there and listen, and only answer questions when you're asked a question, not actively partition or petition for your own personal agenda, like the solar field across the street from your house.
What solar field across from my house?
You, you know what solar field I'm talking about.
Deb, did you live from him with the solar field, as in Miles's agenda? Miles didn't even know what we're talking about. We're talking about solar fields in general.
I know where the one is across from your house. You keep talking about, you sit in meetings, you.
Yeah.
You captivate 45 minutes in a typical meeting, talking about the site and what you're seeing from across the street from your house. What field do you think we're talking about?
What, what do the other people see?
I don't know what the other people see, I don't live there.
No, I know, see, that's the trouble. You don't live there, so you don't care.
Oh, no, that's not the case at all.
That's what you just said.
My point, we're not gonna argue the facts of that field, we're gonna argue the fact that you use your position as a committee member on planning and zoning to promote your own personal agenda. And that's not acceptable.
Deb, we're talking about all solar farms, right? Miles claims he don't even know what we're talking about, but.
No, we're, we're talking about that particular solar farm, because we are going to go, Miles and I, because you had concerns about the landscaping around it, so Miles and I are gonna go out, and we're going to measure and see if they are following their IUP. So we have been talking about that.
But you know, the council, or the planning and zoning asked to see the cup, but you failed to bring that to the meetings of the people.
You know what, Lloyd, I don't, I'm not gonna listen to this, because you did not ask me to do that, and I do not want to hear you say that to me one more time, okay? I'm done with that, you did not ask me that.
Okay, let's go back to what, Tom, you were talking about the 45 minutes in the planning and zoning meeting. At that time.
The last two meetings.
Okay, where are the concern, are the concerns coming from all of planning and zoning, or just from what you're seeing?
I have had people on the planning and zoning committee come to me and complain about that, okay? I, I'm, the basic premise of being a liaison to a committee is you are supposed to be there, observe, participate when asked, not use 45 minutes of the whole meeting pontificating about your problem with the solar field across from your house.
Can I please interject?
Yes, go ahead.
All right, so, the Planning and Zoning Commission is a Minnesota statute mandated commission. It is under Minnesota statute. And a Minnesota statute has to be supplemented by an ordinance in order to even have a planning commission in Montrose. Montrose has an ordinance, code 2301, under section B, under paragraph G, it states, council appoints a council member to be on the Planning and Zoning Commission. And that person, one person, not an alternate, there's no provision for an alternate, that one provision is privileged to speak on any matter, period. That's our ordinance. So, I just wanted to inject that. That is legal law, that is an ordinance of sitting in this.
I don't think it's legal law to have a.
An ordinance is a mantra.
I don't think it's a law, legal law to have a committee member use that forum for his own personal agenda.
You weren't there when the solar farm was established. I was on the Planning and Zoning Committee, as was Lloyd, and so many of the issues that were supposed to take place have not taken place over in that solar farm. So, you're coming in at the.
You're, we're talking two different things there, Catherine.
All right, I'm just telling that he has, he's privileged to speak on whatever matter he chooses, and that I assume is related to planning and zoning.
Then what is the definition of a council liaison?
You're interrupting her.
He's privileged to speak on whatever matter he wants. That's our ordinance.
What is the purpose of a com, of a committee liaison then?
That's, is that what you just read?
Yes.
No, it is not. So in other words, any committee a council member sits on, he has the right to loviate and pontificate about whatever topic he feels like.
It should be, that's his job.
I, I just, hold on, hold on. I just want to clarify, because, I mean, you're right, you were on there when the whole solar farm came in, and I'm, and I'm not at the planning and zoning meetings, I've been at one recently, within the last couple months, and you're saying that he's talking about the one across from him, correct? That's the big deal. Okay, so, but with that, as Catherine just stated, a lot of the things that are in the internal use, it's, the internal use permit, get them mixed up.
IUP.
Yeah, the, a lot of them things are not being followed.
We don't know that yet, because we have any value in this.
Well, but we can, we have a good understanding that potentially a lot of them issues are not being followed the way that they're supposed to be, and if I went, like I said, I'm not at these meetings, so I, if I'm understanding this correctly, that is the issues that he's bringing up. And it shouldn't pertain to the whole 45 minutes, but that in return, because I did, with all of this, that it came up last Monday, I did reach out to every member of planning and zoning to kind of get their input on this. And a lot of them's concern is the chairperson then needs to take reign of that meeting. So, if, if the, if they felt it was out of line and moving on too long, they need to stop it.
And you didn't hear that from anyone on the committee?
What?
Complaining about this situation?
I didn't say that, I'm just saying, but they're also saying that, that the chairperson, whoever it may be, needs to reign that meeting in, that's their job, is to do that. So understandably, the person that we have currently in the chair is new, so they're not, you know, but we had to come to a resolution on this somehow.
This has been going on, I think, since, for every planning and zoning meeting I've attended, even before I was a council member.
Now, what was it about? See, you should say what things they were about. I was also, when Pacsmar was here, nobody said anything about this AUR study, which the developers are supposed to pay back to the taxpayers. See now, that, that's all involved in that. You didn't know that.
This has nothing to do with the topic.
It's the same thing, hey, I'm talking now, it's the same thing with the parking wreck, those fees, that should be collected. We don't have any money in the parks.
What does that have to do with the conversation we're having right at the moment?
Because it's all involved.
What's involved? What does the AUR have to do with your solar farm out there?
Well, they're gonna, they're gonna.
And your disruptive behavior in the meetings.
Well, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Anything built in the city limits is affected by that AUR. $500 an acre.
Okay.
That's what they're supposed to pay back.
And they didn't?
No, they didn't.
Well, then who's respond, who's responsible for that?
Well, I suppose I'd have to blame that on the office.
Oh.
I mean, it's not my job to collect it, but at least I brought it up, so everybody's aware of it. Half the people on the zoning committee even admitted, they didn't know what it was about. Wendy is right there, she can explain what the whole reason was for the AUR study.
The AUR, the AUR does not affect the solar farm, because it's not a development, as in a housing development or commercial development, that, that has any roads affected by it, any kind of landscaping, other than the trees that have to go around it. It's only an intraneuse permit for 27 years, it's not a permanent development. The AUR, so when you build it, when you build a, an area, a development, so like if you're a housing developer, and you come in to build a new development, before you can even do anything, you have to get approved by the state. You have to either have what's called an EAW, which is an evaluation, do you remember the, evaluation something? There's two different levels.
Environmental assessment worksheet.
Yeah, that's environmental assessment. But it has to do with how many acres you are on to begin with, and how you're going to affect any wetlands, or anything like that. That, the solar farm did not qualify to have to have any of that done, so that's why they were not charged the AUR fee, because they don't fall under those requirements by the state of Minnesota.
And aren't they taxed now as commercial?
They're taxed, I, I'm guessing that's how they have them taxed, but it's not the same as.
So if it's commercial, it's commercial, and it's.
But it doesn't qualify as an AUR, because they didn't have to have it done by the state. And if the state doesn't require it, we can't require it.
Why did we ever get them?
Why did we ever get what?
The AUR study. Why did it cost the taxpayers $250,000, and they can't recollect?
Because they have a development that you build. Well, we're going to collect it with the new developments, with the preserve, when they develop that, we'll collect with it.
Yeah, see, that's what I brought up, and that's what.
Well, we already had that, in the developers' agreement, we had already met with them, and already told them they ought to pay that. That was long before you even brought that up, they knew that.
Well, they didn't know it the day when I brought it up.
Well, that's what they tell you, but they did. They, anybody that comes in, so the developers, developers that already had it done ahead of time, we couldn't force to do it again, but if any other new land comes in, like if it comes in on the north side, or the south side, or anything, that comes in that hasn't had one done at the state level, they will have to have one done and pay, by us, and pay us the fee. So it doesn't go to the state anymore, it's done by our engineers now.
Yeah, and that's what, when they developed it, it must have changed that way, right?
When it gets developed, that's when they pay it, and instead of having to send their whole, everything to the state and have the evaluation done, or the environmental assessment worksheet done, our engineer will do it, and they'll pay us the $500 an acre to do it. But the solar farm didn't qualify, didn't have to do it, it wasn't the requirement.
Do you have a question?
Yes. I know, I was on planning and zoning when this solar farm went in, and we required them to put a fence up, plus evergreens, tall enough to cover it, and it looks like they're half-dead now, and there needs to be something done. That's all Lloyd was backing us up for. There are people that really have never participated in the volunteer work of Montrose.
Well, that affects the community, not just, right.
Yeah, that's something the community's gotta live with, 27 years or whatever, but you might as well say that's a lifetime.
But Lloyd, we can get a point across without being disruptive and repetitive. In the last couple meetings, you have repeated the things over and over and over again. I mean.
That's the way negotiating and planning is. Why should we set a 45-minute limit on something that you'll never get anything done?
I didn't say we'd set a 45-minute.
Well, you said, you complained, because you claimed I took 45 minutes, which we should have had to tape here, because I doubt if I talked.
Go read all the minutes, go read the minutes of these, it's Lloyd Johnson, Lloyd Johnson, Lloyd Johnson, I highlighted one, and it was like, all yellow.
Questions.
You, repeating the same things over and over again, it's very disruptive to a meeting. You know, some of those meetings have been done in 45 minutes, but they take an hour and a half, because you're up there.
Yeah, you know, they probably had a 45-minute limit when we got stuck with that AUR. You realize that this is the only city around that's got it.
How do you go with the AUR again?
So let's continue.
And that's what I elected for, to protect the taxpayers.
Okay, we can talk about that someday too.
Yeah, you can talk to me anytime, man, I'm in about that. If this back, back, behind the back business, I didn't go for that.
Oh, behind the back?
Yeah.
I told, I told everybody, I would've said the same thing at the meeting, if you were there.
That's the next question.
Yeah, somebody had to tell you that, remind you that, even Kirby reminded me of that.
Okay, let's, let's not sit here and argue all day, because a lot of us have stuff going on. So, again, like I said, I did, I did reach out to all of the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and this isn't the only topic that they have concerns on, there's, there's a lot going on there. So, we, as a commission, we have to figure this out, and, I mean, I only have one of you here now, I have X here, but another one that they're concerned about is having two people sitting up there.
Yeah, that's right.
So, I mean, every commission member has that concern as to why two council members are sitting up in the chambers. So, that we have to figure out as well, since we have this on here. I didn't realize with the, what Catherine just stated, that it's not a part of the ordinance, but we typically do have an alternate, so, just because if one can't make it, the other one can. So, some of them have concerns on, Lloyd, yes, they do have concerns on, you know, bringing things up over and over again. So, I get it, I get both sides, but none of them, they want to see a resolution to this, not necessarily taking away a position, but figuring out how everybody can work together. So, and that's what we need to figure out here as a council, how to do that, how to get this Planning and Zoning Commission back to where it needs to be. Did you have more concerns, Tom?
No, I, we kind of glossed over the personnel one, I mean, even Amy suggested that personnel committee should only have two council members, so we don't have a four month.
Right, and we did, and we did do that before, but like I said, it's, it's been typically, I don't know how it isn't here, is it the acting mayor and mayor that has been on it, and then we invited the third person, one of those.
It's been just council members in the past.
Yes, we re, we remade it to the mayor and the acting mayor when Dale was here, just that way, if you had changed a member, you didn't.
If I could be wrong, she could appoint anybody to come and take my place.
Well, it was.
Well, it was just that, it's the board of the acting mayor.
If you were here from acting mayor, we didn't have to change the resolution, say if Kirby becomes the acting mayor. It just stayed the same, we didn't have to adjust anything, because it was, it was a title, not a name.
Yep, okay.
That's why it was changed.
Okay. So, Tom, what, what, let's figure out what you're trying to get at here, and what you want to see moving forward, and then we'll discuss that.
Well, I think I made myself perfectly clear, I mean, I, I don't.
Well, on the personnel committee, yes, you did, but planning and zoning, let's, if we can try this, the alternate, the alternate unfortunately should not be sitting. I mean, that, from listening to the commission members, they're feeling a little intimidated, having two council members there, putting a little bit of pressure on them to, for whatever reason, make whatever decision, because they've never had two council members there.
I sit there mainly as an observer, anyway.
Well, then just about the options.
Well, okay, hold on a second.
Sophie, I don't appreciate your attitude back there, thank you.
You don't appreciate anybody's attitude.
I don't appreciate yours either.
Can I talk for a second?
Guys, let's not do that.
Like, I haven't said anything, can I talk?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So, what was discussed in January was that they would both be liaison, but it would rotate each month between one being the acting, one being the secondary, and I think it just kind of developed into both of them being up there at the same time, so.
The reason for that was, Kirby, is that you can't stay current in what's going on if you alter any.
Right, yeah, they, they wanted everybody to be there, and, I mean, I, I can understand why they don't want, does it specifically say you can't have two?
That's against the.
Does it say you can't have two, though? That's, when you read it, it said, point A, council member.
Look up 2301, section B.
Can I see it?
I don't have it, I don't have.
Oh, I thought you did, I thought you were reading off it.
And it's G, and it's paragraph G, and it states that the city council appoints a one council member.
It could be amended.
Well, right.
That's it.
Yes, I agree with you that it says a council member.
And that person, you know, can speak on whatever subject matter he wants, he's privileged, he or she is privileged to do that.
What, do you know what it says about an alternate? I, I've read through it, but I haven't, I don't, I don't know how to memorize, I've read through every ordinance, and some of them, they just, you don't remember every single one by letter and number.
Well, I do, I remember, I'm.
I wish I had that gift, because I can't.
I do remember.
I gotta read it two or three times to know. In fact, that was, that was the thing originally, was that there was two of them, and they were gonna rotate back and forth of who was.
That's not in the ordinance.
The acting, who was the.
Right.
That's not what we have to equip.
Well, I mean, I don't, I, I personally think there should be an alternate, I mean, I know if the ordinance says a acting council member, or however it's worded in there, there should be somebody as an alternate, just because if Lloyd's not there, or if I'm not at Park and Rec, you know, we have the alternates, just because. So I still think, we still need to have the ordinance.
Mayor, can I say something? I was chair on.
As long as it's positive.
Listen, but, go ahead.
I was chair on planning and zoning, and we only had one liaison all the time, and somebody wanted to talk, it was a liaison on the council, we'd let them talk, and see what they got to say, and go on with whatever we had to do. And I was chair for a couple years, and I was on planning and zoning for over three years.
Well.
And we never had this situation before.
Well, no, all they want is one voice now.
Right. Well, that's all it's all.
That's not good, that's not good at all.
You only have one voice, right there.
No, you don't, I was on the planning and zoning, and I was on for several years with Lloyd, so I don't appreciate that type of preference.
And I know that a former chair requested.
He's very professional, and he did always a good job.
I know a former chair that I spoke with yesterday had also requested that Lloyd be removed as the liaison prior.
And who, who did that?
Curry DeWitt.
Well, currently, though, we're not worried about.
But it takes more than one.
Well, hold on, though, we're not worried, I, I get where you're coming from.
Just because he didn't like me, that's.
We also don't want a commission that start voting on getting rid of liaisons.
Lloyd, he shouldn't have even been on the planning and zoning.
I'm hoping we can figure it out on.
We need, we need to figure this out, and, hold up that there. We need to figure this out, because, and whoever was, it doesn't matter who was here in the past, it matters who the commission is now.
Yes.
And the commission now is a member of, what do you got, five? I think, and I, I heard from all five of them, up until 8:45 last night, so there is a couple that would like to see changes, but there's a couple that also said, you know what, there's not an issue. So, the resolution, I mean, the solution that I could possibly give right now is, continue with Lloyd as the liaison, we will keep in contact with the commission closely, and Lloyd, you have to let the commission do their job, because that's why we have them. And if they ask you questions, you know, answer their questions, or whatever it may be, but the commission, we have to trust that they can do what they, that we appoint them to do. So, and like I said, it's a, there's many of them that don't have a problem with Lloyd being there, but like I said, there is a couple that are concerned that you have these, that the solar farm is a personal thing right now, so we just have to let, so it, it doesn't matter who, what, or why, it doesn't matter. We have to figure this out and get it taken care of today, keep you as a liaison, and like I said, we keep in close contact with the commission members, and, I mean, if I have to go to a meeting and make sure things go, then that's what I'll do.
I'll tell you what, if the Planning and Zoning Committee is happy with Lloyd being there and loviating every meeting, then I will tender my resignation as a liaison to the Planning and Zoning. I don't need this. And if you want a non-functional committee, you got it.
Well, I'm, I take the heart of the commission, okay? I was accused a year and a half ago of not caring what the commission has to say, and that is crap, because we put them in a position for a reason.
That's what I said, if they're happy with that, then fine, that's, I'm not good with that.
Okay, but the negativity that's gonna come, we don't, we don't need that, and I, and I told, Tom, I told you last week, and, and I don't like seeing this, because we have not had this on a fricking council in three years, and now we're back at this bickering and arguing, so it needs to stop.
That's kind of because everybody just rolls with the punches, and nobody's, everybody's afraid to stand up and try to do.
I'm not afraid to stand up to you or anybody else, okay?
I haven't said you were.
That, that's just what you said, everybody rolls with the punches.
I'm talking about councilmen, I'm talking about committee members.
The committee wants to do, the, the commission wants to come here and do the job that we appointed them to do, and not have conflict, they want to be able to get along and just do what we ask them to do, you know, they don't want to be. You know, they don't want to be involved in the politics, so, well, that's the solution, then. Lloyd, you're gonna continue the way you are. I will make good a point to keep a close eye on what's going on in Planning and Zoning. Like I said, when the issues come, it's my job then to reach out to each and every member like I did, and I will continue to do. If there's a problem, we'll be looking at possibly somebody else. You know, whoever it may be, but that's where we stand. Now for the Personnel Committee, let's move on to that.
Well, are we taking the, I need to know this, are we taking the alternate one off, then?
Apparently.
There's none?
I guess so.
Yeah, he resigned.
So, um-
Thank you. I already said that.
Oh, second.
Moving forward, I hope that, you know, we can all just put our differences aside and do what the people here elected us to do, and that's the run of the city. Not hold grudges, not do anything, do what we're supposed to do. Personnel Committee, everybody seems to want to have two, so-
You can't, you can't have three.
Right, so we're gonna go with that, well, depends on the time.
We've got a resolution.
Some a little, a little, right here. So, um, do we have to have two? We currently have myself, Tom, and Lloyd as personnel, we're gonna go to the two, do we have to have two? Deb, do you think?
Well, as far as, I, what do you mean by that?
Personnel.
What is your alternative?
Yeah, what do you?
Um, one. Because if there's a personnel issue, it's gonna be, um, regarding staff or council, correct? Because, I mean, council, we're open up to the public, staff, it's different.
Yes, and we just have to make sure that privacy is a huge issue with that, then.
Correct.
So, we have to make sure we have the right people on.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. How busy are you?
If you ask, I'll do it.
And they don't meet often, only when personnel matters, hold on.
Then there's an issue that happens, yeah.
Yes, yes. So, unfortunately, Lloyd, I know this is here, but there are some-
We don't have to change that resolution, then?
It's possible, we'll look at that in a second. The, the reason that the Personnel Committee is, has this discussion right now is because we will be hiring shortly for Deb's assistant. With that, there has been some concerns, um, we'll just leave it at that. There's been some concerns with the protocol and everything on that. So, I'm gonna look at the newbie down there, Kirby. If you are available for this-
Well, especially I'm available during the day two most days, so-
It's, because you're usually at three, if needed. I don't know what your schedule is, but I am gonna make that change, just because it's interviewing people, it's confidentiality, it's, there's a whole lot of stuff with that, and like I said, we don't meet anyways, because staff's amazing, so.
When it comes to interviewing, other than those two sitting right there, the Personnel Committee doesn't even need to be involved in interviews.
Well, hold on with that.
Because if you're not interviewing their positions, they're the ones that need to interview for the people they're hiring.
Right.
I mean, you don't really need, you don't need to have the Personnel Commission or Committee involved in it, because you don't really work with them.
What I've, what I've seen done in other cities, when I've done interviews and whatever, is that they, they have two people that are on the Personnel Committee, so after the supervisors do the interviews, then they sit down with the Personnel Committee, they go over all the candidates, their hire points of everything, and then either the two council members, you know, say, proceed with hiring this person, or they bring it back to the councils of all, and they go, yep, we're gonna-
Right. And that's, and since I've been here, I think I'm on year seven now, we have been a part of hiring Deb's position, hiring Wayne's position, hiring our public works people, we staggered in on multiple interviews, everything with Sean. So, unless, do we want to go that way? Or, I mean, I don't know your availability, I have no idea if you're available.
Lloyd, I can make my schedule work, I choose-
We could always have it later, because we could have a part, that means, they don't last very long.
Well, right now, we're talking about the interview process. I mean, we're gonna put you in place of personnel, make it work.
Just me?
Me and you. If that's okay with Congress, you guys okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
Ben?
So, we're, we would be renaming, removing mayor, acting mayor, council member, Tom Marslick, and it would be saying, council yourself, so we'd be putting names in there again, correct?
Well, we would, well, ooh.
Yep.
Yeah. So, we would be keeping, it should be the mayor, whoever is, whatever. The, well, I was brought up, go ahead.
Why, do you have a problem with being on the Personnel Committee?
No.
Then why are you removing me from it? Some punitive thing, or what?
No, I just want a fresh set of, fresh set of eyes, just because of the stuff that's going on right now. You know, I mean-
We had two meetings, for God's sake.
No, I mean, not, not just that, I'm just saying that, go ahead, go ahead, Ben.
I guess, I'm, I'm fine with just removing the acting mayor part of it and leaving it as is, too. I mean-
Well, even the, at the last meeting, they talked about, I mean, Wendy brought it up, if there's a personnel issue, and say, I'm just using you, because you brought it up before, Wendy, if there was a problem with Wendy, she doesn't want the Public Works Director in there, she doesn't want the Fire Chief in there.
Yep, yep.
So, um-
No, and I think, I think if, if there's a personnel issue, it should be with that person and the two council members.
And maybe their supervisor.
And, and, you know, if, if it's Wayne, or if it's Wendy, or, you know, the supervisor, but no-
The supervisor in place, yes?
Yes, I mean, no, I mean, Kevin shouldn't be in there if there's, if there's an issue with Wayne.
Right.
You know, and-
So, we'll take, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, no, I agree with that.
You just want you to counsel people, is all, you really want a name as personnel.
Because, I mean, when they're, when we have issues at work, we don't bring everyone-
The whole staff?
We don't bring in the whole front office.
Right, right.
And do it, it's between HR and that person.
Right.
And I look at-
Well, either way, we would have to, I, yeah.
I look at our council as, and essentially, HR.
Well, we all are, really.
Yes, but I, but I look at it as, with, in referring to the Personnel Committee members, I look at the council members as HR.
So, then there's really no question with Michelle and Kirby, then?
He just, it's the fact that he just doesn't want it to be names, he'd like it to be titles, so it's not changing names, council-
Well, I guess-
Why would you change the title to mayor and the councilor?
Just, I don't know if you have that in place.
No, you're supposed to, you're supposed to have, like, mayor, acting mayor, but then you would have the name of the council member on the committee.
Okay.
Because they're in office for four years, so it can be on there. You can, you can make a motion for whatever you want to do, any of you can, so.
What's your thought, Ben?
One, I guess, you know, it-
Keep it at Tom, go with Kirby.
Well, it just struck me, you know, you say a fresh set of eyes, okay? Do you do one set of eyes, do you do two sets of eyes?
Right. Well, I mean, it's only because there's so much animosity right now, that, that's my thought, is just kind of let it calm down a little bit, I hope. And I don't have a problem with Tom continuing on, if that's, we just need to move forward. However, we, we do it. Do we have pom poms back here?
So, do we need a motion, then?
Well, there has to be a motion as to who it's gonna be.
I'll make a motion for council member Kirby and council member Tom to be members on the Personnel Committee.
No.
Gotta be the mayor.
Doesn't.
No, doesn't?
We could sit here all day. But I have things to do, I have a meeting to get to my daughter, and unfortunately, we gotta, you know, Tom, are you willing to stick, stick here, Personnel?
Yeah, I, I said I was.
All right. As I mentioned, there is a motion, is there a second? Okay.
I don't think we can second her.
So, what, can I?
Why, that issue?
Yeah, we can.
Yeah, I'll second.
So, discussion?
So, we don't want to keep it as mayor and whoever else?
It's always been that way, but-
Technically, it should be that way.
Well, it has, since I've been here for seven years, it's been that way, so, um-
Prior to you, too, it's been that way.
It was Michelle and Mark for a long time.
Yes, right.
And neither one were mayor.
Mayor and a council member.
No, Michelle and Mark Trotzer.
She wasn't mayor yet.
Right, it was-
Oh, yeah, that's right.
So, it's not always been the mayor. It's whatever you guys want.
It is because, well, let's not get into that discussion.
No, but I mean, it's forever.
I think that would be-
It's whatever you pick, it hasn't always been set in, in stone, it's just whoever you pick.
So, I, I, okay, discussion, then. Ben, I get where you're coming from, or whatever you're doing. I'm not the issue here.
I guess I was just feeding off of you, saying, hey, fresh set of eyes.
I know what you're doing, I, that's what I'm saying, I know what you're doing. So, the, the issue is not me, so, whatever. I just, this is getting, this council seriously needs to pull it together, because now, and I explain my reasoning, is because there's animosity here, and these guys need to just take a breather, okay? But now you're throwing this into the mix, and we need to stop that stuff. And, and I explained my reason, but again, we need to be a united council. And, in my opinion, if it's not been that way for quite some time now, and we have a motion, we have a second, there's the discussion, Kirby?
I, well-
Do you have more discussion?
I, I do think that it should keep mayor on there, just because that's the, it's the chain of command from council, and I get that the mayor is just an equal part of council with everybody else, but I do think that keeping the mayor on there is a distinction to have. But I do understand what Ben is doing, you know, you did say you want a fresh set of eyes. I mean, there's, there's no guarantee that there's not gonna be three different people other than me and Tom on here in two years, so it would be a four-year thing, but, I mean, there's many ways you could skin a cat. I just, I do think the mayor should stay on there with whoever, I mean, I personally would say Michelle and Tom, but-
So, we have to do the vote, so your vote would be a no. Tom?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
No?
No.
I will make a motion for mayor and Tom to be the Personnel Committee.
What about Kirby?
I'm not the mayor or Tom.
No.
So, okay, he has a motion, he has a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Lloyd?
No.
I will vote aye. Ben?
Aye.
Aye.
Tom, Deb, all right, go right down the line. So, the Personnel Committee then is the mayor and council member Marslick? All right, are we good? Then we just have to schedule, um-
Do we have to vote to approve all of the appointees as the changes, or it's just good?
I will bring it back to you in a new resolution at the next council meeting.
Carver Field, was that Wayne?
So, I've got a couple of questions here, Michelle.
Yes.
So, you stated-
Could we be a little friendlier, Ben?
So, you stated, well, I just, I guess, at the past council meeting, I didn't enjoy the misconceiving words.
Okay.
At forty, thirty-four minutes and thirty seconds into it, you stated that you were up here with Ashland and filled out the application. Was Ashland present to fill out the application?
No.
Okay. At, um, and, as you said, also at thirty-five minutes and ten seconds, you said when we dropped it off, because I asked if Ashland was gonna be present, and you said that when we dropped it off, was, felt, you know, that it was not necessary, so Ashland was not present.
Right.
And then after we had the meeting, I, you know, we discussed about the hot dogs and-
Do you know how old those things are, Ben?
Okay. So, this here has a auction tag on it. Okay, so you're saying none of these are yours, signs that you use?
From years ago, yes.
Okay, so-
You know the hole there?
So, you didn't tell the Carvers last year that you have popcorn in the stand that they can use if they want to during their-
We have stuff, yes.
Okay, and your license allows you to make popcorn in the popcorn maker and serve it?
We don't use the popcorn maker.
So, why is the popcorn-
Because we've had it forever, it's oil, it's, if you go-
So, so you-
Again, we have issues, if you want to do this, or not want us to do this, just state it, okay? This stuff has been in there, if you talk to the Carvers, this stuff has been in there since they ran the concession stand fifteen years ago.
Probably longer than that.
That is their equipment, originally.
Okay, well, this has to be, this has to be changed, because this is not code, because there must be three feet-
This stuff was donated, yes.
No, 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 there has to be three feet around there, so that has to go, that has to go, um-
Well, it's, it's donated stuff, do you want me to tell them now? I mean, it was donated from our Public Works Director.
That we, we've already discussed and found a spot for, so the rest of this stuff, here's the pictures for you guys to look at, there is, like, twenty-some of them to review, um, different pieces of city equipment.
Let me ask you a question, go ahead, go ahead.
When we, when we discussed this, you said the only thing that was in there that was the city's was a freezer?
Right here, this one?
This one?
No, this one here was donated from Sean, it was his mother's?
Yeah, I don't know which one that's here.
I think it was his mom's.
It was from the estate, though.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, so one freezer?
Yep.
Is the city's? And that's the only?
This freezer right here was donated from Jason.
So, we have two freezers in there that are the city's? What else of this stuff is the city's?
Um, well, what do you got, what pictures do you have? The popcorn popper and the hot dog machine.
Which hot dog machine?
It's two of them.
The, oh, the crupid thing, um, I don't know.
The big upright one, right?
Yes.
There's a big upright one, there's something that says hot dogs on it?
Yeah, like a quickie mart.
So, the other stuff that is in there is, after all the events are over, I use it, I put it in there as a storage, it has been-
So, so, who's, who's, whose equipment is it?
Mine.
So, you're starting your personal stuff in the city?
Because it's been used for events. We use, like, the coffee thing, different things get used at skate park, or not skate, skate day, yes.
You can't do that. Are you holding a license for skate day?
It's, it's a outside vendor group that brings it in. So, no, Park and Rec doesn't do it. So no, Park and Rec doesn't do it. It is stuff that's.
You still got the coffee maker then. Don't be saying that.
Okay.
Okay, so, like, whose are these then?
Mine.
See, what are they used for?
We've made cookies with them before. Years ago.
So why?
And we just have never taken it out of there, because I'm in there every year, four times a week for six, twenty years, Ben. So the stuff just sits in there.
Why are you storing your personal stuff in city? Do you, do you have a lease agreement with the city to store your personal stuff?
Oh my god.
I mean, I'm just asking, Michelle.
And I, and I told you many, many times. I am in here six weeks, sometimes seven weeks out of the year, four days a week. This stuff, the license, actually, the guy will be here to license me tomorrow. We used to have a different license in there where we could sell different things. He actually wants to give me an event license to sell whatever, for as many events as I want. So right now, I don't even know what the license is going to be, because over the years, it has been either a June to June event. Or last year, I think it was a, was it the twenty-one day? Whatever it was last year. So every year it's different, and we, in the past, have sold stuff, and I, I don't take it out. It's in there.
I, I look at it as, is it, it's a liability issue to the city if you're, if you're serving hot dogs and someone gets sick from it. And I, I don't mean that you would intentionally get anyone sick. There is no question. I, I know with your background that you would.
I am licensed with the state, certified.
Yep.
Yes.
But okay, if someone gets sick.
It's on me.
You don't have, but you're also in.
The city building that I'm licensed for, yes.
Using city equipment, so now the city's on the hook too.
I am in a building that I am renting that the council waived the fee on with a license from the state of Minnesota. As I am also a licensed. Food safe serve manager for the next five years, my license carries to. So there's license after license after license that is in there.
But your, your food, your food license, is that a commercial or is that a private?
My food license?
Yes, your one that you were just talking about that you have for another five years. Is that?
I'm, I'm, I can go anywhere and do anything I want. I'm licensed with the state of Minnesota. I can walk into any facility, or I can be the licensed person for the community meal. I can, whatever it needs to be.
Okay, I'm just asking, because I, you know, like, you know, private versus a commercial driver's license. I'm just asking for clarification on that.
You also said, you said there was stuff about electrical, right?
Yes, with electricity. So now, when you guys bring stuff up there, you guys take it home with you then, or is that?
No, I thought you said, like, electrical code.
Well, that, yes, that comes into play with the, the stuff here. These two freezers have to move. Because you have to have three feet of space to get in and out of electrical panels. So those two freezers would have to move. No question about that. Your stuff that you guys take up there, is it state, because you said there's basically no electricity use because it's during the day. Do you guys bring all your stuff home, or does the stuff go up there and stay up there for the summer? Like the pop and the whatever else you're sitting?
I take it out and refill it every day. I'm being sarcastic now, but no, I do not. It stays in there, of course.
Okay, so would that not have been something to have said that when asked about the electrical usage, you said, hey?
I don't remember that question.
I, we bring up the stuff and it stays there until the end of Little League. So.
First, for, the first game is, I'm going to clarify. First game is, I believe, this Thursday. The last game is July fifteenth, maybe? So from the minute I put stuff in, probably Monday. Pop, Gatorade. Candy, sunflower seeds, chips. Cotton candy. What else do I get? I don't even remember. We'll have freezies in there. I don't know, whatever candy, candy bars, whatever, whatever it is. It will go in there Monday, it'll leave end of July. It will, the. Pop cooler that you have a picture of will run the whole time, the pop cooler. The Pepsi cooler that, that Ashlyn purchased with the money that was profited off of this, yes.
That is, that is owned by the Otto family.
I'm sure it would stay with the field.
Well, I, I know, but, but right now technically it's.
Yes, it is owned by the Otto family, yes, yes.
Okay, I guess when asking that question, it would have been nice to have known that this stuff, because I was under the assumption that you guys were bringing stuff up. You know, like, how we had concessions when we were younger. It was brought in a cooler, it left in a cooler every night.
No, it's, we have a cooler in there, a full pop cooler that the stuff stays in six weeks. Yes.
That makes sense too, though, because you wouldn't have break-ins and stuff that people know there's nothing in it.
Yep, correct. Yeah, if the product was removed every night. I guess, knowing that, I, I would like some electricity money. I, I guess.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not, I don't.
I get it.
Because I, I very specifically asked the electrical usage and you said, there's barely, there's barely any, and you said that this stuff.
There is barely any.
But, but you're, if you're bringing freezies and stuff up, you're, you're, you're taking those home every night then, or are we running a freezer as well? That runs all summer long?
It's basically the pop cooler that runs the whole time. The pop cooler and the back fridge. The two big coolers, they're just in there to be in there, because they were donated as backups. I don't even, they're not really even used. It's the pop cooler and the refrigerator. And again, I'm just going to say this. And I, I might be quoted in the paper again, but whatever. My family has done this for fifteen, twenty years, okay? I, and I think this was, I cannot believe that this is such a hot topic. When. We, we take our time. Four days a week. Two, four, six, eight, ten, about fifteen hours a week. That we give to the community. My kids give to the community. I am there as a supervisor, so I'm there all the time watching kids, whatever. But. To have this field. That we have had for, I'm going to be forty-seven. Since I've, my husband played for on Carver Field, four of my kids played on Carver Field. And for us to continue just to run this for the kids, I cannot believe it is this heated of a discussion. Yes, we.
I guess, I just, I just would have appreciated when I, when questions were asked, they were asked truthfully.
When, they are. When we are in there four days a week, we sell very, very minimal stuff. We make pretty much nothing, because we sell things at fifty cents.
But, but on, but on camera. You lied when, about stating that Ashlyn was up here with you filling out the paperwork.
I thought I just said I, the application was filled out. I asked if Ashlyn needed to be here for this, because I know you guys had that concern. I said, does she need to be here? Because if she does, she's, she works. And if I recall correctly, I'm not perfect, I could be wrong. The answer was no, because they, the staff was under the impression that the fees were going to be waived. And I, I asked if I needed to put a deposit down. I was told, no, not at this time, because it was going to go back onto the agenda. And they thought the fees were going to be waived. So at that time, no check was given, nothing was given. It was brought back to council. Here we are. My family runs this concession stand, Ben. We use electricity that is in there. Some nights, we even flip the lights on, because it gets dark. So then the electricity there is also used, even more so than what the cooler gives. All we want to do, and we're kind of at the point of saying, you know what, let's just let the community know that the council has an issue with us continuing this. Because the council has an issue with us continuing to bring this community together.
Can I say something, Mayor Ollin?
Yes.
Charlie Nelson, when he was mayor in Montrose, and the Boy Scout Committee, the wife was on the Boy Scout Committee. We donated two freezers to the Boy Scouts for their stand up there. In Montrose days, them freezers run. They all, every day with their stuff and their meat and everything in there. And the Boy Scouts don't get charged nothing for electricity.
The Boy Scouts pay us anywhere from fifty to a hundred dollars every year.
Do they? Wendy? Okay, I didn't know that part.
We don't, we don't charge the Girl Scouts. We don't.
So, but I mean, you know, excuse me a minute, I want to try and say something. Number one, Wayne, how much electricity you think is used up there?
I have no idea.
You have no idea, but these guys know.
If everything in there is used, quite a bit. We could go back, we could go back on the bills.
So the kids in the community don't deserve anything?
Oh no, I mean, I, I never said anything. Nobody's, nobody's saying.
That's why I asked you about the electricity.
Nobody's saying anything, but there is electricity being used. Somebody's making money.
The money that goes in there, you're right, we are making money. Maybe a hundred bucks, maybe a hundred and fifty bucks. But that money goes back to that freezer that was broken, or we are more than willing to, you guys can have whatever money comes in it. It's very minimal. But I just, again.
I just can't believe that you don't think the kids deserve something.
I know, so do you, so do you?
You're whispering a bit.
Can we not start swinging around at who's got the bigger, whatever? I mean. He's not saying that the kids don't deserve it, so, but don't, let's not start that argument, Lloyd. But. What Ben would like is, my understanding is, the, the stuff that's. Michelle's family's, to be taken out of there, and then the stuff we told the city to take out, to take out. So that, A, the least amount of electricity is used, and that. We're assured as a city that they're not selling stuff like hot dogs and stuff. And I get that they're not. And I trust Michelle when she says that they're not selling stuff that they're making, like hot dogs, or nachos, or. Ices, or whatever else was listed on the stuff. But I, I, I feel like that's what Ben would like, is the stuff that's theirs to be out, or if it's donated to the city, it's donated to the city. And then the stuff that Wayne needs to know what to take out of there. Because if it's a safety hazard with all the electrical stuff being there, that's the first thing we should take out, especially before the inspection happens, just so that we're not. That's, that's my understanding of where we're at.
Yes.
I got a question.
Wesley's got it quickly.
Can we? So if you guys take out, if you guys take out your coolers, or whatever belongs to you. We take out whatever belongs to the city. Can't we just buy like a refrigerator that's got a freezer on it? And put it in there that belongs, that belongs to the city, and whoever uses the building can use it? Would that be, can't you get pop and your freezing, your whatever you sell frozen in there?
Keep the heat.
Right, the one that's in there now is not.
We talked about it getting something more energy efficient, because everything in there.
Let me go to that one, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but this one's gotten me going. Okay. Four years ago, we had two pop coolers in there. Public Works probably took them out, because they got.
They're too hot.
Yep, they did. And so I went to the city. And I said, what can we do? We have nothing. What can we put in there? You know, we need to have something. At the time, the public works director said, get, get whatever you need to put in there. You know, and I said, I think I have something. I've found something. This is the cost, the money that we've made, let's put it in there, because it's a typical pop machine. That's what it is, is a pop machine. So.
Pepsi or whatever.
Yep, yep. And so, because working with the former director, we looked into buying, renting, whatever through Coke, through Pepsi, and it was like five, six hundred bucks.
Suspensive for that.
So now I have one, from the money that was made from the concessions, so.
I mean, the only reason I'm saying that is because if we're running in, if it's too many things, and I haven't been in there, so I don't know, but if there's too many things in there. By the panel, if we took it out and just put in one, you know, that's what I'm saying, is because then at least. If we got too many things in there and we're going to get in trouble because it's too packed in there, because of the panel.
Can you put a refrigerator freezer or freezer?
Yeah, if we just went to one unit with that, and then we got more space. Would that?
How are you going to get a cooler, I mean, it would be a refrigerator, cooler and a freezer?
It would be, because don't you, because you have what, freezies and like what, ice cream sandwiches, or what do you sell? I mean.
Sometimes little malt cups, whatever.
So if we had, so if it was a refrigerator that had a freezer on it? Would that be?
Well, you can use one of, there's two, two other freezers in there, you can use one of.
If you leave, you leave one in there?
The energy efficient.
Well, you have enough room to leave one of them in there?
It's just not enough room for the Gatorade and the water and soda.
Right, and you guys use it, the big cooler?
Between that and bringing in.
So what if the, what if the one freezer stays in there and the one pop thing, that's whatever the, whatever you're talking about, the pop cooler, would have? Just one of those stays in there, is that?
Well, that's all we use, it's the one.
The pop cooler is kind of inefficient, though. You should really kind of. Look at more energy efficient. So if we put a fridge in there, that was energy efficient. And all you do is put a sign on the door, what's in it?
It's just not enough space.
But you just stock it every night?
You can take that goofy.
I mean, you don't have to put it in there for.
Goofy center cooler out of there, so you can set it all back.
And then this, this is so funny, you guys talk about this stuff, because I believe it was my daughter, Ashlyn Ollie, who has come to the city, year after year after year, and said. We need to upgrade. We need to do something.
Well, she must have been one of the public workers with Park and Rec, because she wasn't part of the council.
She said, well, she gave up, because every year, you guys sit and say, oh, no, we don't have the money.
But it wasn't us.
We don't have, well.
Who was it?
Are you sure? Because right now, I mean, I don't want to get nasty.
I don't remember coming to the council at all. I think.
Last month, you guys said, should we spend fifty thousand dollars on this concession stand? Yes, you should, because it's the heart of the freaking city. And that is what it is. We, we have, right now, I have kids that are waiting to get on that field. And they're there. We don't have a regional park. We're not going to have a regional park anytime soon. We're not going to have a ball field anytime soon. And we have all these teams, and to have, you guys can run the concessions. We'll just keep it close. That's it.
Could we get a price for, on some energy efficient coolers and fridge to go in there?
Well, one, the last time I looked, it was like six hundred bucks.
All you need is an energy efficient fridge, I don't need.
Well, if you're just looking at just a, a regular fridge, we'd need two of them, because there's just not enough space for water and soda and whatever, but if there was.
And then it defeats the purpose. But whatever, we'll do.
I mean, defeats what purpose?
Because then we're back to having multiple things in there, running the same, energy efficient or not, it gets to be.
They don't need one as often, Michelle.
I know, but it gets to be a hundred and twenty degrees in there.
And that's all that old crap running. That's what generates the heat.
Also.
An air conditioner.
Hold on, we talked about that, because.
We get insulated first.
I, I went to Public Works for many years and said, because we have a security system in there that keeps tripping, because it's a hundred and twenty degrees in there. So then we put the little two fans, or circulating.
The vents.
The vents or whatever, and I said, well, okay, that's, it's still hot in there. So then it was discussed to put in. The circulating air and underwater, it's, it's not getting done, okay?
This was about the previous public works director, because I don't remember it ever coming anywhere else.
There used to be many topics and discussions, and. It, it all goes back to, is the city willing to put this money into this and do this?
In the long run, the energy efficient stuff would say, well.
I don't disagree, but it's, it's a lot of space.
If you have it energy efficient, it's going to come in cheaper.
Probably, but again, it goes back to just having enough space.
So, can, can you guys take out whatever your stuff is out of there? And leave, I mean, I would say leave the Pepsi cooler in there for now, for sure. But the other stuff, like the hot dog maker and whatever else?
Sure.
And then, can you guys take the freezers out of there and popcorn maker?
Well, the freezers are ours.
Yeah, the chest and the stand-up freezer are the city's, right?
Okay. And what's the other one, and then the fridge?
Yeah, it's just, it's just a fridge-freezer combo. So I think if we clean all that.
But like I said, that, that stuff gets used. And not just my event, not just my event.
The chest freezers do?
I believe so, because. The burgers and the hot dogs that come in in September, there's not space for this with one refrigerator. And that stuff gets used, so.
That's only one day and, or two days out of the whole entire year.
It, right, but it's, I mean.
So they can make provisions.
It still gets used.
But I'm saying, why, why run, why run the refrigerators that cost us a lot of money?
But they're not being run.
For two days.
Well, I mean, they run it for two days. They're just in there. They're not, not everything is plugged in, not, not everything is used. It's just there. For if a backup, it's there, because the stuff was donated. So we're not using it. We're using the pop cooler and the refrigerator. The freezers. Were donated.
They're totally in the way. They have to go. Much of it has to go. Not if it's a bunch.
Or your, I mean, whatever. I mean, even if we move the, I don't know, the guy, he'll be here tomorrow. The state, so. I mean, even if we move the, I don't know, the guy, he'll be here tomorrow, the state, so. He'll let, he'll let me know what needs to, you know?
He isn't gonna know nothing about lucky panels and what can be by what.
Well, he's gonna know what we can use and what we can't use.
Right. And which can't use, then can go out. I mean, it's so cluttered in there with everything, just get rid of it.
I know, I'm the one who's in there 15 hours a week, I know.
Get rid of the stuff that's not used. You know, if you have trouble with that counter being one of the pop coolers, we can take that out and move that wall back. It doesn't have to be right where it is.
Right, right.
To give you more room to work outside.
I mean, we work it, we just-
A lot of things we can do. We were just talking with our own people.
Apparently. So, the state will be here tomorrow, we'll get licensed. I'll work with Wayne to take care of Carver Field. Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. Administrative fees.
The next one is the ordinance you discussed with the last city council meeting. And we're in agreement with all of the changes that we made. They were changes that had to be made. So, I just need someone to make a motion to approve the new ordinance.
Which, is it the 2019-12 or the 2019-06?
It's the 2019-06.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2019-06, setting development administrative fees.
Second.
Lloyd.
Aye.
I'll vote aye. Ben?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Kirby?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, and then you received the names that the, that I received when I sent the email out from the committee and from council member Moina. So, just wanted to know if you wanted to discuss it and pick a name. We as staff talked and we liked the Montrose Streetscape Committee name. Thought that was appropriate because we're trying to hit, not just Highway 12, we're trying to hit the entire community.
Yeah, beautify the city.
Yeah.
I agree with that one also. Do you need a motion on that?
Yes.
Make a motion for the Montrose Streetscape Committee. I'll second.
Tom?
Aye.
Kirby?
No discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, go ahead.
Uh, question?
Yes.
Um, now, does that Montrose Streetscape take place on Highway 12 or until?
Yeah, it's just probably the city as a whole instead of just Highway 12.
So, we'll still be on it?
Yeah. Yeah, they're gonna say the same chair, vice chair, lead, not because the name changes.
Just the name is changing.
Do you think we should specify streets then? We should just say, I would like to beautify it.
They don't like, they don't like that word. They don't like the word beautify.
And if you say street, no, they didn't let me, it's all the streets.
What about community enhancement projects?
Yeah, then it's for everything.
That's gonna, this is just for street, street stuff.
Yeah, and it's just doors down so far and across and then back down south.
That's all I have, I'm good.
Okay, Kirby?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
I vote aye and Lloyd?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Wayne?
I have two summer people, they're older guys, both of them, and they're working out really well. They both love their job.
They're very excited. I don't know if you guys saw, but the one that is currently here, he took a picture of himself in the city truck and posted it because he's very excited to be working for the city, so.
When they come up here, they're just like, they're like-
Yeah, they're like kids at Christmas.
They're two big guys.
They're ruining all this, Ben.
Yeah, yep, so, good job.
They got a little trouble mowing, it's wet all over.
Yeah.
Can't mow house, it's hard because they're too wet. Other than that, we're good.
Carver Field is looking good. Kirby, or Coco was out there yesterday and-
We need quite a little work left there.
Yeah, we're getting up and going, so. Yeah.
Okay, just a few things as far as planning and zoning goes. The former Casey's Building, we do have someone that's very interested in that. So, Miles is working with that person and hopefully, we'll be bringing something to plan zoning on June 19th. Co-enforcement, Wendy and I have been going around and taking pictures of properties and documenting, so we're working on that. 121 Hill Street has been forwarded to the city attorney. She's gonna take it from here, see what she needs to do. All of the information that's been sent to them in the past has been forwarded by, to her. On the Preserve Housing Development, we were supposed to meet tomorrow about that with the developer that's interested in that, but there's still some things that need to be done, they're not quite ready to meet yet. And so, they're working with the city engineer and Wayne are working on some of those things. And so, that will be, we're gonna reschedule the meeting until the beginning of June. They need that much time to look at that. The Solar Energy Systems Ordinance, the Planning and Zoning Commission has gone over that. They need the final changes. Miles is preparing that document and will be brought to planning and zoning again at their June meeting. Administrative Assistant Position, we had seven applications. We've scored all those applications and at this point, we've looked at what the final scores were as far as a cutoff and we're going to interview two people of the seven applications. We'll see from there how that goes. If we're not happy with either one of those applicants, then we will move on to the next group. It's in a sort of a segment of numbers, so. I have given to each of you this resolution. Wendy came up with this today and I think it was a great idea. It's a summary publication of the ordinance that you just passed because otherwise, we have to publish that whole fee schedule ordinance again and that is pages and pages. And it's quite costly. So, the resolution you'll see right here is exactly what we published in the paper, is the bottom part right here and it tells of the changes that were made. So I just, if you're in agreement with it, then I just need a motion to pass or to adopt this resolution so I can publish.
Make a motion to adopt resolution 2019-12. Second.
I'll vote aye. Lloyd?
Aye.
Kirby?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
And Ben?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Then, your next city council workshop would be on Monday, July 22nd. I am going to be on vacation starting the Wednesday before and that Monday. So, I would like to ask if we could please move that to the following Monday, July 29th so that I can prepare the agenda packet for you when I get back from vacation. If you're in agreement with it, then I will put it on the council and consent agenda for approval.
Don't we have one in June?
Pardon?
Don't we have one in June?
Yes, I'm just looking at July, yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we have one in June, July.
Just looking at July so I can get it on the agenda and get it approved at the June meeting.
I'll be gone for that meeting, but you guys can do that.
Okay, so, is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
The workshop, you would be gone for?
Okay, and then, I just wanted to say that I do wanna work on putting together a joint city council and Park and Rec Commission workshop. I think that would be really important. I think even today, talking about all the stuff at Carver Field, nobody's on the same page as far as what improvements we wanna make to Carver Field,